I would like to call this meeting to order. I would like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the November 13, 2018, regular meeting to order with all board members present except the president, Beiser, who is absent from the meeting due to personal matters. With that, would we all stand? And the Army JROTC color guard from Morris High School will now present the colors.
Color guard, hold. Left, face. Carry, colors. Colors, blue.
Place your hand over your heart, right hand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, colors. Order, colors. Right, face. Forward, march.
Thank you, please be seated. If you wish to address the board on any of the agenda items before the board today, or on a matter that is not on today's agenda, and your name is not on the speaker list printed on the blue paper located at both entrances to the auditorium, and you have not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit to Marty Stoltz, our Board Action Officer. Speaker forms are located at both entrances to the auditorium. I would like a motion to adopt today's agenda with Section J, superintendent's consent agenda, to be considered next following the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
With a motion by Dr. John Lee Evans and seconded by Dr. Mike McQuarrie, please That motion passes for zero. Thank you. Now, does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? I have speaker notes for items J-1, 15, and 18. Are there any board members who'd like to move anything?
Well, why don't we move 1, 15, and 18?
Right.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so we'll, we have your motion, we'll hold the other three until the end of the meeting. And so now, do we have a second on that motion? Okay, with a motion by Mr. Barrera and a second by Dr. McQuarrie, please vote on the motion. Thank you. That passes for zero. Now, we have a student presentation, and we'll ask Mr. Barrera to introduce Area 5 Superintendent Mitzi Moreno, who will introduce the student presentation item for today's meeting, and it is Kimbrough Elementary School Classroom Learning Targets for the San Diego Cluster, Area 5.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne and Area Superintendent Mitzi Moreno will introduce this item, looking forward to it.
I am so excited to introduce the team at Kimbrough because I actually spend a lot of time at Kimbrough Elementary School, and it is so amazing what the principal and the teachers and the students are doing around learning, and these kids are in on the game. So I'd like to begin by introducing the principal, Hernan Baeza, who will introduce the team of students, the important ones.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Martin, board members. I'm the proud principal at Kimbrough Elementary. I'm gonna turn it over to our amazing students, they're gonna share a video with you.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin and board members. My name is Bogard Nava, I'm a 5th grader at Kimbrough Elementary. These are also students from Kimbrough Elementary. We are here to present you a video that will display all of the learning that has been happening at Kimbrough. Last year, our school had the opportunity to be part of a student-centered coaching cycle in math. Resource teachers came from district and worked with our 2nd grade teachers. It was such a success that the rest of the teachers got involved in the learning, and therefore, all of the grade levels were able to learn about learning targets. Before we had learning targets, a lot of students had a hard time with word problems in math. Many of the problems were very confusing. Since then, we learned about the importance of reading the problem several times so that we could understand them better. We have learned to read the problem at least three times, each time with a different purpose. In the video you are about to watch, you will see the students explaining learning targets and how they have helped us. The great thing about this learning is that now we are applying learning targets to other subject areas as well. Learning targets have helped us because now it is clear on what we are learning and how we demonstrate our learning. Now we will play a video for you.
Learning targets are some things that help us explain our thinking.
Learning targets is a way to help us with math.
Learning targets are something that helps us with math when we're having trouble with a problem.
Learning targets help us organize our thinking.
What learning targets are, they're basically goals for math to help you explain strategies so other people can get it as well.
Think that they help me in math and they help me explain it to my classmates because it's like a goal and it helps you because it helps you explain it more specifically than not explaining your work, so it helps me and my classmates.
I think learning targets for me are, I use them to help other students to understand my work because sometimes I'm not being specific of my work, and learning targets really help me to show other students what I'm talking about and what I'm doing.
Learning targets has helped me understand the problem and organize it.
Learning targets help us understand math problems.
Learning targets help us organize what our thinking is.
Learning targets have helped me understand math problems better.
Learning targets are a way to help me figure out if I'm doing, it helps me by helping me checking by going by and describing of what I'm doing. Also, it gives me a more understanding of the strategy of music.
Learning targets have helped me because now I can organize my work and make sure to answer all the questions, and since it's easier, it helps me, it helps me with problems.
Learning targets have helped me by helping me organize my work and letting me show, share my work with other students.
An example of a learning target that I learned is labeling my numbers.
One of the learning targets I've learned is to draw a visual representation for the problem.
Another learning target that I've learned is to label my work.
Another learning target is to write an equation to help us with the problem.
One example of a learning target is in my class, we use a number line to describe a problem, to help us with the problem.
One example of learning targets is that in class, we use area model to multiply two-digit numbers, and it's way easier.
One learning target that we've learned is to write an equation that represents a problem.
Before I knew the learning targets, I did not know if I had it right. Now I do know.
Before, I didn't know my learning targets, it was difficult for me to do math.
Before learning targets, I didn't know what was I entering, and, but now I know.
Before, when I didn't know my learning targets, I used to have difficulty with some math problems, but when I learned them, they got easier for me.
My learning changed after I was learning targets because it helped me understand what my classmates were, when they were sharing their strategies. And in math, I got to use those same strategies to help me throughout the whole entire year.
With learning targets, things have changed because before, I couldn't understand my classmates' work and they couldn't understand mine, but now that it's more organized, I can understand theirs, and that's why it's helped my learning.
Before learning targets, I didn't know if I had finished all the questions, but now that I have learning targets, I can check it off my work, so I know what I did and what I didn't.
Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say thank you so much to the students and to our principal from Kimbrough. Probably for 10 years, we've been hearing about strategies to help students learn, and what you just described and in the video was probably the clearest and most articulate description of what helps students learn that I've ever heard. So thank you so much, incredible work, thank you.
And some more presentations? No, I just want to also say, as a math teacher, and also as someone who taught teachers how to teach math at Cal State U San Marcos and at San Diego State also at one point, it's wonderful to see those strategies and to see them implementing them. So thank you, teachers and staff and students, thank you for articulating it very well. Thank you.
Also, what I heard was that you just weren't doing the problems on your own and by yourself, and a lot of your strategies involved working with other students, watching what they were doing, reporting and listening to the report, so you could learn from them to apply that skill at another time. But well done, thank you.
Now, we will go to item C2, which is the presentation of the 2018 Board Presidents' Scholarship Awards. Now, here are those. This is the 22nd year the San Diego Unified School District has presented the Board Presidents' Scholarship through Cal Coast Credit Union and Mission Federal Credit Union, who donated $2,000 each to fund four $1,000 scholarships. The scholarships are presented to monthly classified district employees who are currently enrolled in college and have a goal of becoming a teacher. We had many deserving applicants, which made the selection process very challenging. A screening committee scored each application, and I'm pleased to announce this year's recipients. Ruben Gomez, Ruben, right here, okay. Narissa Bradley. Christian Molano. And Lillian Hawkins. Congratulations. Their names have been engraved on a perpetual plaque that will hang in the Board of Education office. Renee McKee, the Senior Vice President of Community and Public Relations with California Coast Credit Union, hi Renee. And Richard Santiago, the Senior Business Development Officer with Mission Federal Credit Union, are here to present the awards. And you're here at the podium with me already. Come forward. Ruben is a special education behavioral technician at Point Loma High School. He began his career with San Diego Unified as a substitute in special education classes 15 years ago, and considers this work the most rewarding experiences he's had in his life. Ruben plans to use this scholarship award to continue his education at National University, where he is majoring in mild, moderate special education. Ruben's colleagues believe he plays an active role in the lives of the students he works with. One colleague states, "Ruben is able to relate to students, and he strives to bring joy to the lives of everyone he works with." True? Thank you, Renee, would you present? Thank you. Next, we have Narissa Bradley. Narissa is a special education assistant at Spreckles Elementary School. She began her career with the San Diego Unified District in 2017, serving both moderate-severe and mild-moderate students. Narissa states, "Extending my education and completing my special education teaching credential would create new beginnings, not only for me, but for my future students." Narissa's colleagues describe her as professional, caring, and enthusiastic, and that she encompasses all the qualities that are necessary to become an amazing teacher. Narissa plans to attend Open University at San Diego State University in spring 2019 with a major in liberal studies, and plans to earn her teaching credential by 2021. Renee, would you present? And now, we have Christian Molano. And I think this is awesome, this is awesome, because Christian is a building services supervisor too at Edison Elementary School, and is currently majoring in Spanish at San Diego Mason College. Although he's working with the buildings, he wants to work with the children on a more professional level, if you will, and so he is accepting this award today. Although he enjoys his current job with the Unified, he also wants to do more to work with helping children. He states, "I want to create a classroom environment where students feel welcomed and supported to take risks in their learning and appreciate their educational journey." He's well-respected among his colleagues, and they describe him as an invaluable asset to the school, who is working hard and dedicated to the school, the staff, and students. Christian plans to complete his bachelor's degree in 2021, and then earn his credential to become a Spanish teacher. And let's give him a round of applause. Congratulations to you also. Lillian has been a community home education assistant at Twain Crawford High School for almost a year. Lillian plans to use this scholarship award to continue her education at Cuyamaca Community College, and then pursue her coursework for her teaching credential in spring 2020. Lillian quotes Winston Churchill as saying, "Success consists of going from failure to failure without loss of enthusiasm." Although Lillian has faced many challenges along her educational journey, she continues to be determined to achieve her goals and show her students that failure is just a stepping stone on the path to success. Lillian's colleagues admire her ability to be flexible and willing to help out whenever needed. Quote, "She has a love of learning and mentors students while supporting them with their studies." I present to you, Lillian. like to offer a special thank you to both California Coast Credit Union and Mission Federal Credit Union for their continued support of the Board Presidents' Scholarship Program. The scholarship complements the work of the Teacher Pipeline Task Force, a joint undertaken with the district and the San Diego Education Association in developing a plan of action for cultivating a highly effective and diverse teacher workforce. It is clear that these dedicated employees and future teachers already demonstrate important core qualities, and we're so pleased to see they are furthering their education. Thank you again. And now, if we could move to non-agenda public testimony. Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting of the Board of Trustees that is conducted in public, and board members will not engage in a dialogue with members of the audience. The opportunities for members of the public to provide input to the board on non-agenda matters and items on the agenda is through the submittal of a timely public testimony request. The time periods for speakers on each item are set by the board as described in the board's bylaws, and will be announced to the public, I'm sure, members of the public, as each agenda item comes up for discussion by the board. Testimony on non-agenda items is limited to a maximum of 15 minutes per topic. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of 3 minutes per speaker, and depending upon the total number of speaker requests received, the time may be reduced to 2 or 1 minute each. If an issue needs further attention, the board may refer the matter to the superintendent for review and/or investigation. Today, each non-agenda speaker will have, and we have a total of nine here so far, I think, that's it, nine items, so that will mean that everybody, can you do a minute and a half? Okay, that will mean that we will give you each 3 minutes total, that should do it. Okay, please remember, no deferral of time is allowed, and I ask that you speak on an issue, not on individuals. Non-agenda public testimony is for only those topics, not on today's agenda. If your topic is on the agenda, you will be called to speak when we get to that subject matter item. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on, a yellow light when you have 1 minute left, and when your time is up, the red light will appear and a bell will ring. The lights are located directly in front of the podium, on the dais, next to Marty Stoltz, the Board Action Officer. Please finish your sentence when your time is up. We will now begin the public testimony on non-agenda items. And I will call you in the order that I have them, Citizen Francine Maxwell, Sebastian Ledron de Gripp-Guvara, and Bridget Rollins to start out.
Let me remind you that I've sent you the law many times, that you cannot restrict a person's right to speak to an issue about an individual in this school district. People have the absolute right to mention the name of someone they feel is wrongdoing in this district, and that's the problem with this district. The superintendent said she would do everything in her power to protect the children in 2013, okay? That's what Cindy Martin said, "I'll do anything to protect the children." She says, "I'm crying, I'm crying," okay? She hasn't done it. On her watch, children were being sexually abused on school campuses, and then this district further traumatizes these children in court of law. One youth, the young man from Crawford High School, had to testify on his 19th birthday in a court of law about how his teacher at Crawford High School sexually abused him. In the classroom during the school day, school police officers watching them drive into the back gate of the employees with her and this young man in the car with her. Nobody's paying attention. So, in that case, the jury found that this school district was indeed negligent, and that comes back to John Lee Evans, and Sharon Whitehurst Payne, and Cindy Martin, and Richard Barrera, and Michael McQuarrie, and Kevin Beiser. Makes you negligent. Jury said $2.1 million. And I want to know if you're gonna pay him, or if you're gonna further traumatize this young man because of what you did. So how many more children will be victimized before the superintendent implements needed child protection measures? Easy to do, cost almost nothing. You've already got permission from the Florida State of Education to use their program for educator misconduct. educator misconduct, and still, Martin sits on it, and sits on it, and sits on it. And in fact, allowed one man to be fired because he was trying to pursue the sexual abuse of several children at Green Elementary. That happened on her watch. So, when Cindy says, "I care about the children, I'm all about the children," I say, "I don't think so."
Resident of District E, I wanted to make sure that the record reflect, now that our election season is over, there was some promises made, and so I just wanted to make sure that the record reflects that we were listening, people went and they voted, and it was stated publicly, and it was a public promise, that if one of the bond measures passed, that this Board would reinstate three positions for the Police Department. And so, since that bond measure passed, I'm looking for this Board to reinstate those three positions to the San Diego Unified School Police. Now, there's not one black person in management of the San Diego Unified School Police Department, unless there's been some promotions, and I haven't read the current paperwork, but the last time I checked, there were no African-Americans in this management. So how is this reflective of the community that they serve? When we say that we want to put students and safety first, you want to make sure that there's a reflection and a bond being made with the community and the Police Department. I think the last promotion of captains and sergeants, they were not diverse. So once again, we're in a diverse city, in a diverse county, in a diverse world, but our Police Department for San Diego Unified School District, it doesn't reflect that much diversity, the last time that I looked. Like I said, if there's been some shifting and some promotions, I'll be ecstatic and I'll relook at the paperwork. And I want us to understand that true leadership is a connection between the community of people that are truly qualified, and not just because they're my yes person, and that they push my agenda, but that they really care about the children that they're serving and the community that they're serving. I was also ecstatic to see about the shovel-ready projects that are about to happen in Miramesa, I do believe, and it has to do with the arts and the music. I want you to ponder, why does Lincoln High School have such a beautiful theater that was built, and the Lincoln students do not perform in it that often? Many outside entities are paying to use that theater, but Lincoln is paying to fix the things that they mess up. The band teacher, who was an awesome man, who wants to be in the community, he every four weeks has to turn over children. So how can he build an orchestra or a band every time he turns over children? If arts is important, the way that they are, the way that this diocese is showing north of eight, try showing some of that love south of eight. Because my children at Lincoln High School do not have a true orchestra, do not have choir, and I can go down the list of knots. We can change this as we continue to close 2018 to 2019. Let's show true equity, and that we're reaching across the aisles, that all children are going to be exposed and celebrated in the VAPA. VAPA is extremely important, and it's the deciding factor that will help keep the children in District E coming to school. With over 3,000 tardies, over 4,000 unexcused absences, the arts can save those children.
This right here is a picture of my son. I don't know if you can see it, but the circle is a knot. My name is Bridget Rollins. My son is a Shere King. He's a third grader at Valencia Park Elementary School, and I fear for my son's safety. On November 5th, I dropped my son off at Valencia Park. He went so happy and ecstatic, as he usually is, but then when he came home, there was a huge knot on his head. You may be asking yourself, "Why am I bringing this to your attention?" One, I did not receive any notification of the knot that my son endured at campus. Two, meaning no one called me, no one texted me, no one sent a note home. Three, my son has autism. Four, he is nonverbal. So no, he could not talk, but yet, they let him walk around with a big knot on his head. I had to take him to Children's Hospital, where the doctor told me he had a contusion. I had to watch him to make sure that he didn't fall dead in his sleep, basically, because no one could tell me what happened. The next day I arrived to the school, thinking that someone was going to intercept me and say, "Oh my God, I'm sorry what happened to your son." But no, no one did that. No principal, no teacher, no security guard, no aide, no one. I had to bring it to their attention that my son came home with a knot on his head. Once again, this is District E, Valencia Park, I'm not going to call names, but I called a meeting with the principal, with five other employees in the room, and asked them all what happened. Their answer was, "We have no idea, and too bad he cannot talk to tell us what happened." Our mistake was, we did not call you. This is unacceptable behavior. So now I'm here today to tell you that your systems that you have in place have broken. The systems you have in place to educate children have broken. The systems you have in place to keep kids safe have broken. The systems that you have in place to teach teachers how to work with kids on the spectrum have broken. I can say that because I've been in education for over 10 years. I have worked in charter schools, which I think are the best, but that goes not to say, but anyways, I think they are the best, because they take the time, they take attention, and they pour into the kids. I do believe that public school systems do pour into the children as well, but you, who are sitting here, Boards, you have to do better. You have to make better choices. You have to educate, and you have to care. This is unacceptable. Now my son has a scar on his head. Do you have any answers for that? No, you don't, just like the school.
President Whitehurst Payne, can we direct the Superintendent to check into that situation? Thank you. We refer that, lest you've heard of it. Sebastian is not responding. Let's see, Cheryl Carr, Susania Garcia, Maria Teneri, and then Miles Durphy and Connie Grayble.
Good evening, members of the Board. Thank you for allowing us this time. As the teachers of Gompers Preparatory Academy, we believe above all else in our students. Over its lifetime, Gompers Preparatory has taken monumental steps toward achievement for all students. Gompers has improved our community and sent hundreds of students to college. We aim to continue that work and push Gompers forward in the same direction by helping guide our school and our students toward college and beyond. As professionals, we cannot best serve our students while working in an unstable, unpredictable atmosphere. To best advocate for our students, we must begin by advocating for ourselves. We can help achieve this by working with students to found and support both academic and student interest clubs and organizations, being partners with administrations, with administration in matters pertaining to student discipline and school culture, establishing with administration a transparent and equitable compensation scale that accounts for teachers' experience, establishing with administration a clear and defined system to be monitored by a third party for all matters pertaining to teacher growth and discipline, fair and just compensation for teachers working intersessions, study sessions, and summer school, constructing an efficient school schedule to optimize student achievement, and working with the administration when implementing new teaching practices. By joining together and establishing an association for ourselves, we ensure that our voices as educators will be heard. Meeting these goals will increase teacher retention, provide a stable learning environment, and thereby ensure consistent academic quality for our students. As we move forward, we stand with the mission and goals of Gompers Preparatory Academy. Our movement to create this association at GPA is the best way for teachers to help ensure that the mission and goals of our wonderful school are not only upheld as idealistic talking points, but met with success. We will continue to work for our students and look forward to working with our administration to create the working and learning environment best suited for our community. With Students First, the Gompers Preparatory Academy Teachers Association Organizing Committee. I came to GPA at a time in my life when I was only sure that I didn't want to continue teaching. Director Riverall and the senior faculty and staff members became an extended family, helped me to heal and begin to learn. I learned how to be a teacher who was at once professional and caring. I learned that content was only a small part of the job, and that I had a responsibility to educate. We have to be the arms, legs, and voice of our mission. That is why I decided to work to organize, and that is a legacy I intend to protect.
Thank you. Cheryl Carr. We have another one? This is, okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Susanna Garcia, and I'm a first-generation college student and have been a resident of Southeast San Diego for 20 years. I attended Gompers High School from 7th to 12th grade and graduated in 2005, before Gompers Prep was a charter school. I went away for college, and being away from Southeast San Diego made me realize how neglected my school and community were. In college, I made the commitment to myself of becoming a math teacher in order to come back and teach at Gompers. I wanted to do whatever I could to ensure that students in my community received an equitable education, and to show them that education could open so many doors for them. I have been blessed to teach at Gompers Preparatory Academy. I am grateful for Director Riverall and the dedicated administration and teachers here who have believed in my community and have taken action to make sure that our students receive the opportunities they deserve. GPA has seen me grow not only as a professional, but also as an individual. More importantly, it has given hundreds of students the opportunity to dream and venture beyond Southeast. Yes, GPA has done great things, there is no denying that, and I will forever be grateful for all the good it has done. However, I am here today because I believe we can do better, and there are small changes we can make to ensure that our teacher retention rate significantly improves. Consequently, our students will have a more stable learning environment in which they can continue to grow and learn, thus sending even more students to college. Thank you.
Did we have Bridget Rollins, or Maria Teneri, or Miles Durphy, or Connie Grayble? Your name?
Hi, hello, my name is Connie Grayble. I am Shoshon Manik from the Fort Ha Idaho Reservation, and I'm Unpapa Locota from Standing Rock of North and South Dakota. I'm the program coordinator for the American Indian Education Program, for going on six years, and you guys are passing a resolution, so, for G5, I believe, with the item number. So, I'd like to start off by saying thank you to the Kumeya Nation for which this land originates from, and I am grateful to you, our community, and our friends for supporting our native students by bringing awareness of our culture, by taking a moment to remember the historic injustices inflicted on tribal nations. My hopes for this resolution is to bring awareness of cultural appropriations in the classroom, especially on behalf of our Native American students who may be conflicted by the result of discrimination and inequity. The Title VI and Johnson O'Malley Indian Education Program is available to assist where needed, and thank you for this recognition.
Thank you, and that was G5. My apologies to you. Miles, you're up, Miles.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Martin. My name is Miles Durphy from the California Charter Schools Association. First, I want to congratulate Dr. McQuarrie for your election and your reelection to the Board for the next four years, and I know Mr. Beiser is not here tonight, but I'd like to offer publicly his congratulations from the Charter Schools Association as well. I would also like to congratulate you as a Board on passing Proposition YY, a bond that I believe demonstrates what the amazing work that we can do as a community together when we work together as partners in a collaborative way. So I'm excited that we're working together on that project. Tomorrow, we will release, the California Charter Schools Association will release its annual public call for non-renewal, which is our nearly 10-year-old process now to identify schools that don't meet standards from the state's, again, from our accountability system that we've created to look at charter schools, and for this year, beginning this year, we'll now be looking at schools from traditional school districts as to what their schools that would be below the filters of our accountability system and would necessitate what we would have done as a multiple measure review, which is a lengthy analysis of the school to determine if there are other metrics and other ways that we can see instruction is happening, because we know that the state's data system and the CASP system is limited in its ability to predict what's actually happening at your school sites. So that'll be tomorrow. Tonight, you know, we have a number of items that are on the list of the agenda items for charter schools, ones fortunately passed. We'll be supporting all of those, because none of those schools are on our PCNR list, which would be the only reason that, you know, from an academic standpoint, that we would call for their non-renewal, and we would encourage you to, you know, continue to look at that accountability system as a way to metric how charter schools and other schools are doing, because we think it's really important that you look at the whole school and what's happening in the school. So, those are, again, we encourage you to look at all of the issues in front of you tonight, in the same kind of collaboration and partnership that's good for all of our students in San Diego Unified. Thank you.
Thank you. Because I have a slip for, I have a slip for Tamara Hurley, and we did not hear from Maria Teneri, so Tamara Hurley, I think that's it. Okay. In that case, this completes the non-agenda public testimony for this portion of the meeting. If we did not call your name in the first 30 minutes, we will also hear non-agenda public testimony at the end of the meeting. Thank you all for your comments and for taking time to address the Board and Superintendent today. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve our students, parents, and the community. The report on closed session, are there any reportable actions to report out from closed session at this time?
No.
Okay, thank you. The administrative assignments, Superintendent Martin? Are there any administrative assignments to report on?
Ms. Whitehurst Payne, I believe there was a speaker on E1.
Okay, let's see.
Can I speak?
It's you? Okay, let's see.
You should be there.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, you're up.
So there used to be a time when the San Diego Unified School District would list these lawsuits on the regular agenda, so the public could see what kind of lawsuits you people have and what you're doing about them. And that's not happening anymore. I would like to see these settlements, and when you decide that you're going to appeal a judgment, which generally is against a child, and put it on the regular agenda. You're being secretive, you're hiding things from the public. If they could see how many lawsuits were on the closed session today, they would be shocked. Now, I don't have a problem telling people that you just settled a lawsuit of a Lincoln High School teacher who was a sexual predator, and you settled for $400,000. And I don't have a problem talking about the Crawford teacher that was a sexual predator, and the jury determined that he was entitled to $2.1 million, but I think that's something that you should be telling the public. You should be transparent. They need to know what you guys are paying out in legal fees for your negligence. Okay, that's it on E1.
Thank you, and E2. We also have a speaker. You want to announce the names first?
When you talk about the administrative assignments, you know, many times, I can't hear what you're talking about. hear what General Counsel is saying. She mumbles, you can't hear what she's saying. Now, you used to put out a list and people could just walk over to that table over there and read the list of assignments. And that would be very, very good for people like me that have a hearing impairment. That'd be very good for people with disabilities with their hearing to be able to read it. You want me to do E3?
Yes. We need to, well, we need to announce who the E2s are. Okay, thank you. Hang on just a second. Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. The management appointments for this evening are Director of Special Education Andrea Vinson, Director of Labor Relations Kristi Harris, Program Managers in Special Education, there's three, Marco Samaniego for Area Support, Jamie Milton, Area Support, and Tina Shirley, Instructional Programs and Supports. And again, those are all Program Managers in Special Education. Manager for Instructional Facilities and Planning Regina Riga, Zone Manager for Physical Plant and Operations Jim Halower, Labor Relations Specialist Laura Knight, Principal Madison High School Heather Seaton, Principal Torrey Pines Elementary School Nona Richard, and Principal Whittier School Rachel Page. Thank you, Superintendent. Item E3, you're also on the agenda for that. And then we'll get the young people.
Sure. Under the ASB President's Report, I would really like to see the students reporting about the finances of the ASB. Okay, so when I've been looking at public records, what I saw were that ASBs didn't know that there were scholarships that the kids should be receiving, okay? These kids were not getting them. And the man, the person that gave this money for school, college, for college scholarships, didn't get what he wanted that money to do, which was to be given out to the students. It started happening after I started filing complaints that they're keeping the money in the ASB budgets and they're not giving them out as scholarships as was intended. And the other thing is the CDs. You guys had $50,000 CDs, $75,000 CDs, $25,000 CDs, and they sat there in the bank for at least 10 years. And I'm saying, why do you have $75 in certificates of deposit in a bank for 10 years? When at some point didn't you hear the school board crying that they had no money and the economy's down the tank and we have no money and we have no money? And yet, the ASB students had all these CDs. Now, I can't find those CDs anymore. They disappeared. And I was told, well, they're moved to another account. Well, why aren't you guys asking, where's your money? Because the district can't spend that money. Only the students can spend the ASB money. And they have to have the minutes and they have to have the votes. And they don't have to spend the money the way the principal tells them. They have to spend the money the way the students would like them to spend it on behalf of all the students. So really, when we do the ASB reports, let's get the financials out there. Let's see how much money is out there because it's public information, except that in San Diego Unified, it isn't.
Thank you. And now, at this time, I'd like the ASB student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself and what's going on at your school, both academically and socially and otherwise. We have Skylar Fickett, who's ASB President at Claremont High School, and then we have Jerry Yang, who serves in a dual capacity. You're the President of the Scripps Ranch High School ASB, but then also the President of the Council of all of the ASB Presidents. So whichever order you'd like to do it, tell us a little bit about it.
Okay, thank you. My name is Skylar Fickett and I am the ASB President at Claremont High School.
Do you have the light on?
Yeah, it's on. Okay. And I'd just like to state that I feel that at my school, we've always been at the forefront of innovation, an example of which being our institution of the academy system and our four academies. And I feel like that's been a benefit to us because students finally get the opportunity to experience more career-oriented learning instead of just the normal A through G subjects. So I feel like that's been beneficial to us. As well, we instituted a program for seniors to have internships and already half of our, about half of our seniors are in internships and the rest will be next semester. And I feel like this is important to give students an opportunity to have a level of job experience before they're even out of high school. And I know one student in previous years worked in his internship at a car dealership and then worked there full-time once he graduated. So I feel like that's a good program for students regardless of whether they want to attend college. Also, we have a mentorship program for our juniors and every junior is paired with a mentor. And this helps them kind of have another opinion than just their parents or their teachers and kind of to help guide them and help them figure out what their career goals are and what they want to do in the future. And at the end, at the end of the year, there's a job shadow where the students get to go see what the person's career is actually like. And as I was a part of that program last year, I feel, I feel like that really helped me figure out what I want to do with my future. On the ASB side, I'm very excited that we're, in a couple of weeks, we're going to have another one of our blood drives. I always donate in them and I feel like that's, it not only helps our school but helps the community in general. And at some point, I believe in January, the ASB is going to be doing a community service, but we haven't decided exactly what we're going to be doing.
All righty. So I'll be reporting on both the council and my school, Scripps Ranch High School. So in terms of our council, we have recently outlined our goals for this year. This includes but is not limited to the following, for time, to give back to our community, whether it be through campus volunteer projects or council-wide ASB volunteer days, to reach out to underrepresented groups such as special education more, to leave each ASB as more passionate, more open-minded, and diverse with each coming year, and to bring up the concerns of students and staff during these Board of Education meetings. And lastly is to increase student participation district-wide. Our council is also working on creating council events because in the past, it seems like there hasn't been enough of that council bonding and like district-wide ASB events. I know JROTC, they have district-wide events with their brigades and we're trying to implement that with our ASB. You know, we can learn from all aspects of the school. Our next board meeting is tomorrow, so I will update you guys pertaining to the more concrete details of our district bonding days or programs. But again, I won't be able to see my fellow presidents until tomorrow. Pertaining to Scripps Ranch High School, we just finished our homecoming dance and we are finalizing the winter dance venues and the basic finances for that. We are in the midst of our positivity month. We have our various activities planned throughout. And overall, we're just trying to make Scripps Ranch High School more enjoyable and passionate because with finals coming up soon, it can be quite stressful sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members want to comment? Welcome aboard. Thank you for your support and your assistance. We'll move on now to item E4, Superintendent's Information Report. Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. So as you know, this is the season of Thanksgiving. Can you believe it's already coming up next week? So I'd like to start by saying thank you to the people of San Diego. One out of every two San Diegans either has a student in our schools or graduated from San Diego Unified themselves. So we believe when our schools do well, our city does well. That message must be getting through because last week, voters in San Diego overwhelmingly approved Measure YY to create better schools for our children. On behalf of more than 120,000 students, I would like to thank the people of San Diego. I would like to add a personal thank you. This was the largest bond measure in our history and the first of my tenure. As you know, we believe in continuous work improvement and so I would like to note that support was a point higher this year than for the last measure. More importantly, it says a lot about who we are as a city. San Diego is a confident city. We believe in the future and we are willing to back this up with our beliefs and with support. I know staff is tremendously excited to continue working to build the next generation of great classrooms. I know our law enforcement community is excited to help create safer environments for our students. And I know our partners in the environmental community are tremendously excited to help us provide students with the cleanest drinking water in the nation. There's so much good work to be done and I've never been more grateful for the opportunity to do this work with you, my fellow San Diegans. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. And we will now move on to board information reports and we'll start to my left with Dr. McQuarrie.
Thank you very much. Well, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I too would like to thank the voters of San Diego for returning me to the school board. Looking forward to working with this board and the communities in San Diego to continue the progress that we are making in improving our schools and establishing quality neighbors, schools in every neighborhood. I also want to acknowledge the, as I do many times, the businesses that we work with and the other people that make a difference within our school that are not directly connected to the school. For example, I attended the Maritime Alliance, which is held annually. And this year, it was held here in San Diego and it brings our business partners and oceanographers and marine biologists and career together to talk about our ocean waters and speaking about clean drinking water. We also want a very clean ocean. So the Maritime Alliance is a combination of businesses throughout San Diego County. It is a big alliance with many small and large businesses that are creating a new vision for San Diego and a place for San Diego in the world. So we had a number of our district managers and department heads as well as school principals, administrators, and students attending a Blue Tech Week and then we held an evening award dinner and announced and acknowledged people who are doing great work in this area. We want to create a Blue Tech pathway that creates awareness for oceanography and marine biology in addition to working with our ship construction as well as shipping, container shipping, and cruising, sports fishing, and in areas, large and small, that help us have, protect our ocean waters. In addition, I went to Kearney High School and with Stanley Foster School of Engineering of Innovation and we acknowledged, we named the new engineering building in honor of Pauline Foster. It was a great event with a great family. It was an honor to be there.
Thank you. Mr. Barrera.
Well, I certainly extend my congratulations to Dr. McQuarrie and to President Beiser on your reelection and thank you for your service for the past and for the next four years. President Beiser, I hope we can all keep a place in our thoughts tonight. He, I know, wants to be at every board meeting and certainly this one. He is attending the funeral of his father-in-law, so if we can keep Kevin and Dan and their family in our hearts tonight. And I very much want to thank the, as the superintendent and others have talked about, the voters of San Diego. I think we're actually going to beat Prop Z by two points. I think we're going to get to 64%. Many of the folks in this room, our teachers, our classified employees, our charter school partners, many others, our PTA, were instrumental in that victory. And again, I think every time that we go to the voters and ask them to invest in our kids and invest in our schools, even when that requires sacrifice on the part of our families, our community overwhelmingly says yes. And I'm proud of San Diego for continuing to invest in our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera. Dr. Evans.
Thank you. I also just want to congratulate the people of San Diego for approving Proposition YY. It's one thing to say you support public schools, it's quite another. Taxes are never popular, but to actually vote with their pocketbooks and say, we're willing to have, whether it's our property taxes or rental or whatever it is, go up to support our public schools. The other thing I just want to point out very quickly was during the last week, there was a local physician on TV who was talking about the change to, from daylight savings time and the fact that the Monday after, the number of accidents and different things that happened because of the disrupted sleep patterns. And this comes back to our whole issue about having healthy start times for our high school students. Unfortunately, not for the two who are here because you'll be gone by 2020 when we institute it. But it is just as important as vaccinations and everything else for the public health of our students. And I know there was some confusion because after we had already approved having the healthy start times for high schools in the fall of 2020, there was a bill in the legislature attempting to make it mandatory across the state. It was passed by both houses of the legislature but unfortunately was vetoed by the governor. But that was to make it mandatory in every district. Every district is still able to do what it wants and so we have that on track for Vision 2020. So just realize that our two high school board members here, it's the end of a very long day because they started at about 7:30 this morning in class.
Thank you. And I too would like to extend my congratulations to my colleagues on their work and extending their time with us here. And to say to the citizens of San Diego, you really are the best. You showed that you really are committed to the children by passing the bond and we look forward to continuing to do a lot of things to help our students, our children, here in San Diego. I would also like to just say in the background, you'll see a video clip and I'm not, you shouldn't really be hearing it, but this was a clip of a joint meeting between the parents at Hoover and Crawford Clusters. On a Saturday morning, they gave up about four and a half, five hours from 8:30 to 12:30-ish to go out to begin their work on the LCAP and the local control funding. So you see there in that cluster, they have all the different languages, the different groups who were meeting to discuss what they want to bring forward for 2019. So they're on target to come up with their recommendations and to present to us so that we can unfold them into our planning for next year for 1920. So I want to say thank you to the Hoover and Crawford Clusters and to give them a shout out for their hard, dedicated work with all the diverse groups there coming together. Thank you. And thank you all for your reports. If we could move on now to item F2, which is the proposed 2019 summer school program and extended school year. And we have a speaker on F2 and that would be Ms. Tamara Hurley. Yes? Thank you.
I think I'm a familiar face to most of you. I just wanted to speak because it wasn't clear to me, but it appears that you would be voting on this agenda item. And I wanted to point out that the District Advisory Council has not made any recommendations for centrally controlled Title I funds, including these. In fact, they won't see them until tomorrow. So it's kind of the cart before the horse and it speaks to a broader issue about authentic engagement. Like if you're going to ask your advisory committee to advise, it's not wise to vote before they even have made a recommendation. And I, just because I'm here, I knocked on the door. I could not hear my name being called because I was not allowed in the room and therefore I could not speak in public comment. So I will be sending you something via email because I don't want to sit through all the charter school stuff, but I appreciate it has to do with SSC and put on the LCAP.
Thank you. We will now hear item F2, which is the proposed 2019 summer school program and extended school year. Okay, I would like a motion then on item F2.
I'll second. I have one question.
Okay, we have the motion by Dr. McQuarrie and seconded by Mr. Barrera. And now for discussion, questions, board members.
Well, my question to the superintendent is in response to Ms. Hurley. Well, my question to the Superintendent is in response to Ms. Hurley. Are we up against a deadline, or is there an opportunity to move this to a later agenda item, a later board meeting to get feedback from the DAC?
My understanding, is Ms. Foster here tonight? I'm not sure. No. My understanding is that they were planning to discuss it tomorrow, so this was just the initial draft of the item. And it was being brought to DAC tomorrow as a normal course of business.
So not intended as a...
I'm checking.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm not sure about the timing of it.
Okay.
Ms. Foster went homesick tonight, so I'm not able to answer about the timing of it.
Okay. Maybe what I'd suggest is we table the item for now till later in the meeting, and if somebody can get an answer for the Superintendent on the timing, then we can take it up in a little bit.
At the end. Thank you. Perfect solution. Thank you.
We could, I can withdraw the motion, or we just table?
I'm getting an answer right now, so if you can just table it for a few minutes, we'll be able to discuss. Thank you.
We'll move on to item G.
Item G1 through G6?
We have speakers for G5 and G6.
I will second the motion.
So we just hold those?
Oh, you want to wait? Okay.
Those two items out, and then we'll move forward. For G5, we have Connie Gray Bull, I think she spoke, and then Diana Williams and Carla Torville. And then for G6, Tamara Hurley. In that order, please. Thank you.
My name is Diana Williams. I am Cherokee Apache. My children are Cherokee Apache and Acoma Pueblo. They've gone to high school here. And first of all, I want to give thanks to the Kumaii people as well, for allowing us to use their land. In recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month, it's very important for our children. It's more important that they get the respect that they deserve also in school, not to be asked to do things that are totally against whatever tribal beliefs they may have. Asking them to dress up in paper vests, it's not cool. Ask them to run around with colored feather headbands, not cool. Asking my child to dissect a frog, which in our tribe is very sacred. Lizards, frogs, amphibians are very sacred in our tribe. We're asking that you keep this initiative going, this matter of recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month, and also that we give more information to our teachers on what is right in teaching our children and how to teach our children. Right now, my grandson, he's 12, he's at Man, he is still traumatized for what he went through in the elementary school. This young man had long, beautiful hair, but because he was constantly teased, we ran out of options to bribe him to go to school. We ended up having to cut his hair. Now he's at Man, and his hair is growing, but he's got that fear in the back of his head. He's still traumatized from being bullied. We need to get this information out, that our children are our children. Every one of our children is important. Every one of our children with a cultural background is important, should be respected for that background, should be celebrated for their cultural background. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carla Torville. I'm a member of the Tulley River Band of Yocuts in central California and a tribal elder. This is my grandson, Thunder Garcia. He goes to Julian Charter. Okay. I am a director of the Soaring Eagles Dance Group, which is funded by the Title VI Indian Education Program. The Title VI Indian Education Program, I am the secretary of. I am a foster parent for over 25 years. I've helped with several powwows in the local community. I am the owner-operator of Circling Hawk Creations and SoCal Yocuts. I want to thank the Kumaii for allowing us to continually be on their land. And being a tribal member in this county, it really throws me off that with the 18 to 19 federally recognized tribes we have in this county, we are the only county in California with that many. Kern County, I believe it is, has 12. They come in second. But in the United States, we have 18 to 19 in this county alone. I want to know why we are still having the fourth grade missions taught in this program. That is not right to have my grandchildren, I have 18, 19 grandchildren, one great-granddaughter, and I'm going to have to go through this again with this guy. I went through this six years ago. And they should not have to do this report on the missions. That is just awful, to know that they have to learn about how the white man treated the natives from a white perspective. That's not the right perspective. That is not. The books really do need to be changed, because now this guy, we're going to have to figure out what prominent leader in the 1800s in San Diego County was, you know, for him to do. We don't want that. He needs to learn about his people. We need to learn, you know, more of the native culture through the native perspective. Come on, San Diego County. You know, the atrocities that were done at the missions, the natives were slaves. And if they weren't doing what they were supposed to do, they were beaten, they were killed, the women were raped. You know, this is National Native American History Month. Let's tell our history, not the white man's version. Thank you.
Sharon, good night, Mr. Carr.
Yes. Yes.
Sorry, I would just, I think this is an incredibly important point that was just brought up. And I would ask the Superintendent to engage with maybe you and some folks that you think would be important. And we do have an Ethnic Studies Task Force that is looking at, you know, developing an entire curriculum here in this district. So I think we need to look at revising this curriculum, and we would ask you to help us do that. Thank you.
Chief Six.
Hi, Chief Six. Hi. I can't really follow that one, but this is not the first time I've said before, you talking about parent engagement, meaningful, authentic parent engagement. And it's more than a proclamation, resolution saying National Parent Involvement Day. We do a lot in this district, but the thing that we're not recognized for is meaningful engagement. This district has consistently talked at parents, not with parents, not listened to parents. How many district advisory committees, how many times does the DAC come to you and ask you to change the decrement for Title I funding at school sites? How many times have you actually done it? How many times has the calendar committee come and made a recommendation? And how many times have you gone with the parent's recommendation? The parent-engaged people who sat through hours and hours of meeting, how many times have you actually listened to their engagement? It's more than saying, "We appreciate our parents." It's listening to them and acting on them. Design thinking doesn't work if you just let them talk and walk away. If you don't listen and act on what you hear, it's meaningless. And all this, you know, your face department that gets reorged and reorged and reorged and restructured, but it's never really engaged with parents. You teach, I have a certificate that said I went to this university, like a training session, two Saturdays I gave up to get a certificate. You don't want me in there. I don't think any of the people who sat in those meetings with me, who have a certificate being a trained, engaged parent, are actually engaged in this district. It's just a box that says, "Well, we trained." You still train people. You still don't engage them. So I just, the fact that this is, you know, Parent Engagement Week and those sort of guidelines, I would suggest that you reflect deeply on how you engage with your parents and ask yourself if you're meaningfully engaged with them. And that would extend to my email that will be going to you about the SSC, LCAP. The idea that you can check a box and say that your SSCs and your SGTs weighed in on the LCAP, because they were given an assignment at this point in the school year, is not meaningful engagement. Thanks.
Thank you. And the motion... Do you have an update on the previous item?
Yes. Regarding the summer school item, I did hear from Ms. Foster and...
Did we get the motion on G?
We haven't voted on it yet.
Okay. So let's just get that one done, and then we'll come back to it. So all in favor of that motion, would you please vote? That passes for zero. Thank you. And now we will return to the item F2, I think it is.
Yes, this was item F2, the proposed 2019 summer school program and extended school year. And Debbie Foster, who's our liaison, staff liaison with the DAC, did meet with the DAC executive team and went over the board item, and they were okay with it, and they knew that they would be voting on it tomorrow night. So in conversing with the team, that was the decision that they made. There was a timing issue in terms of deadlines that we needed to meet by December to hire staff in time for summer school. So we were working against an HR timeline, not a finance timeline, but I've checked with HR, and if you'd like to delay until they talk tomorrow night, you can do that. We could still meet the HR hiring timeline.
So we could do this at our December 6 meeting?
Yeah.
The next meeting?
Yes.
Very next meeting?
Yes. So will you withdraw it now?
I'll withdraw the motion.
And you second? Okay. So we will withdraw item F2 and deal with it at a future meeting in December. Thank you, thanks to all of you for that. Okay. We now move to Section H, operational matters for the board. H1 is a designation of annual organizational meeting of the board to be held December 11, 2018, at conclusion of all other business items on the agenda. I would like a motion on this.
Shall move.
Okay. The motion is by Dr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Barrera. Please vote on it. Passes for zero. And now we move to H1, do we have?
Yes.
We're at H1, no, we just finished H1. H2, Empower Charter School. We will now hear item H2. This is an action item, so I would like a motion on this item.
I will move approval of staff recommendation to renew the Empower Charter School.
Okay. A second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have some speakers on H2? Yes. I have one speaker here, Demi Brown.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin and Board Trustees. Also, congratulations to Dr. McQuarrie and Kevin Beiser on their reelections. My name is Demi Brown. I'm the founder and executive director for Empower Charter School. I'd like to express my gratitude to Deidre Walsh and Anna Dave for their work on our charter renewal. We appreciate that they noted our overall increases in student performance and the growth of our student subgroups. We're excited to see that the staff believes that this success warrants a recommendation for our renewal and look forward to working in partnership with the district during our second charter term. In light of the recommendation, I'm going to keep my remarks to a minimum. However, we are honored to have some of our school community present as well. I think they're sprinkled throughout. If you're here in support of Empower, could you please stand? Thank you for your continued support of our school.
Superintendent, do you have anything else on that item?
Nope. I don't know if it does. No.
If you'd like more information, I'm happy to provide it, but I think it's been summarized. We are recommending approval based on the increases that we have seen in the academic outcomes for this school.
I can see that you have plenty to say. We'd like you to say anything.
Board members, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Comments?
Well, first of all, what I understand is that, Deirdre explained to me that a couple of criteria, it could be either one that are used. One is that the school is showing improvement over a period of time, or the other is that it is performing at least as well as other comparable district schools. And so, I mean, I just want to make note of this, because Empower does meet the criteria of improvement over the years. But in terms of the comparison to the similar traditional public schools that we have, we can see a lot of schools ranging from Carson to Montgomery to Field, Ross, a lot of schools are performing much higher. So we have a pretty, pretty big gap here. And I don't think, I think we maybe have a little bit of a communication problem in terms of not letting the public know how well these other schools are doing. And I certainly congratulate Empower for the improvements that they have been making, but I think the other criterion is important to look at, too.
Yes, thank you. As you've accurately pointed out, it is, ideally, you meet at least one of two criteria, preferably both. So you have to show improvement within your school, school-wide and by subgroups, or you have to show that you are at least equal to your comparison group of schools. And so Empower has fulfilled the making progress within its student body. So we have seen increases in the student academic achievement, even though they are not performing at least equally as well as the comparison group. So we'd prefer to see both met, but if they meet one of the two, that qualifies them for meeting academic renewal criteria.
Thank you.
Someone related that, and I think it goes to the question of how do we identify the comparison schools? Could you kind of walk over the, what decisions were made regarding the Empower comparison groups? The first criteria for attendance, and then the second criteria for makeup?
Certainly. So if you look at Table 4, it lays out the two different groups that we see designated by statute. So by statute, we have to do the comparison based on the schools that the students would have otherwise been required to attend. So that's the first group. We see one, two, three, four, five schools there. So those are the schools that were identified based on where Empower pulls its student population from, which district schools. Those are the otherwise required to attend group of schools. The second group, which you see they're designated as, identified as demographically similar district or charter school. So this is, we look at the data across the subgroups for the renewing charter school, and then we look at the otherwise attended, so the required schools. And then if we go deeper, we look at the other charter schools and district schools, and we try to match across multiple subgroups. So rather than looking at a single subgroup to match a percentage, we try to go across and we match as many of the subgroups as we can. So for instance, Linda Vista, which is in the otherwise required to attend, matches in two. If we look at Field, it matches in three. Ross matches in two. McGill matches in two. Pacific View matches in two. So we try to go across and match as many of those subgroups as possible. It's difficult to find an exact match for charter schools, because schools are so demographically different. But that's our process. We have the first set, which is we're required to compare to them, and the second set is these are demographically similar schools.
Okay. So just sort of a follow-up question. I don't see any other charters in this cluster, in these matches.
So McGill is the charter school. That was a similar match for Empower, similar grade levels, and then it matched in two of the... of the subgroups, significant subgroups.
And that's for the second group and not for the first?
Correct. The first group will always only be made up of district schools because it's schools that students would have otherwise been required to attend. And charter schools are always schools of choice, so you are never required to attend a charter school.
Thank you.
Would you put a double line between it in the future, just to differentiate that? Thank you. Anyone else? Any discussion? Otherwise, I will vote on this item, please. Thank you. That passes four zero.
Congratulations.
Our next item is Thrive Public Schools. And this is some action on the renewal of the charter petition. And we have several speakers. I have two categories here. We have 20 minutes, 10 minutes on each side, 10 minutes for the recommendation and 10 minutes against the recommendation. The speakers for are, let's see, Greg Robinson, Teri, Teri Anz, Suraya, Deborah Zier, Christopher Rice Wilson, Tammy, Vegas, okay, thank you, Oscar Dominguez, Keisha Borden, and Claire Crawford. These are for the recommendation.
For staff recommendation.
For staff recommendation, which is to deny. No, it's convoluted. I'm sorry.
Double negative.
Yes, double. One minute each? Yes, this is to deny. I'm sorry. Can you turn on your microphone?
Thank you. Good afternoon Superintendent Martin and members of the school board. My name is Soraya Bouchard, and today I'm here to talk about my experience of Thrive Public Schools. At Thrive, I didn't feel safe because of the incidents while I was present. I got stabbed with a fork and I learned absolutely nothing. There was misspelling in the reading programs and there was misinformation in the math programs. And none of these subjects got addressed. And every day, overall, when I was driving to get to school, I braced myself for the day ahead. Thank you.
Hello Superintendent Martin, members of the board. My daughter here, Soraya, just spoke her piece. I'm Deb. Today, I'd like to speak our minds regarding your decision for Thrive's renewal for charter. I'd like to briefly underscore some of the items that I sent to President Beiser today and share with you some of the things my child learned last year in the third grade at Thrive Juanita Campus. Last year, my child learned firsthand what it meant to be assaulted bodily and sexually. Instead of learning the above-grade level math, she learned about teachers' apathy when she was told to just skip those problems. The program just does that. She learned to be an impeccable proofreader for the very weak language arts programs. My daughter learned that even teachers sometimes struggle with body boundaries. She learned the definition of public displays of affection and workplace impropriety.
Thank you. Thank you. It's one minute.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Good evening Board members. My name is Oscar Dominguez. My son previously went to Thrive. There was an incident where he was assaulted on campus. Us as parents were not notified of the situation. It was a hassle trying to get a hold of staff members, trying to get this situation squared away. My son could have defended himself. He chose not to because he didn't want to get punished for high school. He's looking for the future. The rulebook that the school has, they don't even abide by it. So why have it? It's almost like they're running their own muckus with no accountability.
Thank you.
Hello and thank you, school board. My name is Tammy Vegas. I have two students who used to attend Thrive School. I'm going to speak on their behalf and behalf of another student. My best friends, my son's best friend was at school one day. She's a girl. She told a teacher flat out, I want to kill myself. I have a plan in place. No teacher took her seriously. We ended up having to admit her into the hospital a few days later because nobody at school took this child seriously. We almost lost her because no one listened. Thrive does not have the best interest of our children at heart. When I went to remove my children from school, I asked for their grades. We're two and a half months in, and I was told, oh, there's no grades in the grade book. And I questioned them on why there was no grades this far into the classroom. Oh, it's no big deal. It's okay. We'll just estimate your children's grades. They estimated my son's grade for math as failing. We attended his new school. He was tested. He now has a five-point GPA. There's no way he was failing at Thrive. They didn't know what they were doing.
Thank you. Who's next?
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent. My name is Christopher Rice Wilson. I'm a parent in the district, and I have daughters who go to a charter school. Fortunately, it's not Thrive. In prior board hearings, you made a brave and bold decision to deny this school a charter. The reasons you stated actually panned out, you know, the previous readings, reasons you stated panned out. They are failing. Don't look at their report. Look at your report. Look at the report presented by In The Public Interest, where we, where they compare them to comparable schools of demographics and size. They are failing in every category. Uphold your decision previously and deny them a charter again. Students and families first means that when a school is failing, we let it go. When a staff and administration is failing, we get rid of them. Let them go. You were right the first time. Make the same decision today.
I teach at Mann Middle School. And we get students from Thrive in the middle of the year because their parents have pulled them out because they are not happy with what's going on. I am not against charters. My own son went to a charter school. And I'm not against Thrive students or their families, but I'm here to call on the board to hold Thrive's leadership accountable. Our school at Mann has a strong instructional program, and it's not okay that Thrive has expanded by purporting to outperform the surrounding schools when the opposite is true. And when Thrive, with the support of CCSA, has grown rapidly at the expense of its own students and academics. Please make sure that you make the right decision about this.
Hi, Claire Crawford with In The Public Interest. And I do want to say we have a parent who has more to say, and we'd like to allow her to come back up if there's still time within the 10 minutes. So the same findings, we came up with the same findings in our research, looking at a different set of schools than the district chose, but I think you get the same results whether you choose the schools that Thrive chose, the schools that In The Public Interest chose, or the schools that the district chose, particularly for performance for socio-economically disadvantaged Latino and African-American students. Socio-economically disadvantaged are more than half of their student population, and those numbers are failing. I don't think it's legitimate to try to dismiss the CASP scores. That is our state standard. It's what the state of California uses to judge our schools' academic performance, and it's what we're comparing to all the other schools. In Thrive's response to the district's analysis, they brought up other data. They brought up data that they claim is longitudinal. It's not actually longitudinal data. It's performing, it's comparing performance of students who have been in the school for a longer time to students who have not been in the school for as long. That's not what longitudinal is. There's other gaps in their data as well.
Keisha Borden.
I want to make it clear that we are not speaking against Thrive students or families. We're calling for accountability and honesty in reporting of academic data. Thrive simply does not meet the criteria for renewal. You received input data from your staff. Local public schools around Thrive are outperforming them. Many of these public schools are significantly outperforming Thrive. I have with me postcards from parents, educators, and community members calling on the district to deny the petition, to hold Thrive accountable. I call on the district to listen to these parents, these parents, and please deny this petition for renewal. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Greg Robinson, a sociologist out of Grossman College. More importantly, I was the president of the County Board of Education when the Thrive appeal came before us, and we turned that down for the reasons that you are today confronting as well. Our staff, and remember, the staff at a county has no incentive to turn down appeals like this. Unlike local school districts, county boards get more money when they accept a charter. They don't lose money, they get more money. So there's an incentive for us to approve. Yet our staff went through that rigorously and found concerns about the very issues that the previous speaker mentioned, the approach to teaching low-income English language learners and disabled students. That was in anticipation, and the data you've just heard only substantiates that concern on the part of our staff. Please make sure you don't hurt those children. They may tell you now what they want, but you need to do what's good for them long-term.
These students are not being taught by teachers. They're being told to open a laptop, listen to a video. How are you supposed to learn a second language that way? How are you supposed to learn math? Your history classes. They are not being taught by teachers. These children have no respect for these teachers, and these teachers do not respect these families. I can tell you for a fact, Nicole does not care about these students. When asked why these teachers were not allowed to lecture, her quote to me was, "High school students are not smart enough to listen to a lecture and take notes." Last time I checked, that's what we have to do as high school students, and what we have to do to attend college is listen to lectures and take notes. My 15-year-old recognized his education was in jeopardy if he stayed at Thrive. How many students can say that? That his own education was in trouble if he stayed? He left. He's doing amazing. My other son is an IEP student. His IEP was not held accountable at Thrive. He lost a year of speech. I now get to pay out of pocket to make up for their mistakes.
Michelle Krug, are you on this side or the other side? I mean, are you with this group?
This side.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll make it brief. I mean, all the people are saying essentially, I am hoping that you will do the right thing, that you'll stand up strong for our students, that they need to be educated where they actually can get the attention and the, all of the other things that our public schools do provide, and Thrive is clearly not providing. So I just ask you to deny, deny the reauthorization. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And now for the other side. Thank you all. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Terrence Bobby Ozaki, Nicole Assisi, Wilhelmina Bradley, Stacy Riddick, Nara Franca, Shamar Johnson Senior, Carmina Osuna, and Paula Codaro. One minute each. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. We are here tonight because we deeply love our school and we're proud of our community and want to be locally authorized and work with the district. Thrive was created because we believe that every family needs to have a place where they can thrive. And there are a lot of great schools in San Diego Unified. They're amazing places. And for some kids, those places don't work. And for those kids, we are here. And I just want to show you what I mean with "we." So if you could all stand up if you're here in support of Thrive. These are the teachers and parents who depend on Thrive to be a safe place to learn, and they will tell you that they are learning and that they are growing. And most of these kids in this room can actually tell you by how many points they've grown, the Lexile levels that they have increased, what reading level they were at when they came and where they are now. Additionally, to the folks standing, you have this, which is a signature of supporters of Thrive, so.
Thank you. Give us your name as you speak. Give us your name as you speak.
Good evening. My name is Paula Codaro. I'm a professor of education leadership at the University of San Diego, and I was the dean for 17 years of the School of Leadership and Education Sciences. I have five reasons I'm asking you to support the renewal of Thrive's charter. First, I've visited Thrive. I've observed their classrooms. I've seen evidence of student learning and quality teaching. Secondly, with regard to student learning outcomes, we must not look only at proficiency. We have to look at growth, and we need to look at trend data and ensure that we're examining the achievement of the same students over time. Thrive has presented these data in their response to the staff report. Third, not all of Thrive's students were included in the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress data. Additionally, Thrive has a higher percentage of students with special needs, approximately 20% higher than the district average. The decision you will make will impact over 1,000 children. And my final reason is, the big question is, would I put my child in this school? And if I had young children, yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy, and I have three children who attend Thrive. Olivia, this is Harrison, and Dennis are all significantly impacted by Angelman Syndrome, which causes global developmental delays and affects all aspects of their life. Their biggest barrier is that they have complex communication needs, which means that they are unable to talk verbally. They all need alternative, augmentative communication methods, specialized academic instruction, and a one-to-one academic coach. Thrive is more than just meeting the bare minimum for my kids. My children are excelling here. If Thrive wasn't here, my children would have nowhere to go. Other charter schools with similar programs have a full and long waitlist. Traditional school options here in San Diego have not worked for my children. My children have already made connections and friendships at Thrive, and we look forward to continuing through high school with them. Please vote to continue our charter and Thrive as a community that not only welcomes us, but has embraced us. Thank you.
My name's Terrence. I'm going to defer to my wife, Celeste, who Cindy and everybody else knows.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. Superintendent Cindy Martin, my name is Celeste Bobakozaki. I'm a parent of two children enrolled at Thrive Public Schools. I have put my children in traditional educational environment for many years, but for the past two academic years, I have found that their experiences and their overall learning development was being diminished as the district was not able to provide the resources necessary to carry out the strategies that were recommended in their IEP and/or 504. Since Since we enrolled our children at Thrive Public Schools, the staff members, everyone, have gone out of their way to ensure that all the needs were being met in terms of the resources and strategies that were recommended in my child's IEP and 504. I urge the school board to not follow the staff recommendation, to not renew the Thrive Charter renewal. Instead, you need to look at more than just test scores. Let Thrive continue, because the children do thrive. My children have thrived. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Carmina Osuna, and I'm a proud Latina educator and leader at Thrive. Thrive is a unique place where the cultural diversity of students is celebrated, and where leaders, staff, and students spend time planning, executing, debating, and reflecting on issues involving equity, diversity, and inclusion. As a first-generation college graduate and an example of what is possible for Latinas, I believe that Thrive is invested in this work. My first collaborative interactions with folks who look and speak different languages than I didn't happen until my time at UCSD. We know that's not okay. At Thrive, it is part of our vision that all students, including those who come from historically underserved communities, come together to learn and collaborate. With your approval, not only will you allow for this critical work to continue, you will open doors for collaboration among more schools in this district, all for the benefit of our kids in San Diego, our future. Thank you.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to speak to you today. My name is Dr. Nara Franca. I am a parent and a teacher at Thrive Public Schools. My husband, my eight-year-old son, and I moved to the United States in January 2017. A new president was moving into the White House, and we were worried about the rise of anti-immigration and anti-minority sentiments. We're also concerned with finding a great school for our son where we wouldn't feel threatened by his origin, or that would give him access to excellent education. Thrive received us with open arms. They did not only offer us a place, but they also gave us a community that values our diversity and keeps high standards of education amongst its students. I also would like to show my support to Thrive as a teacher. Before coming to the U.S., I taught rhetoric and research at an elite, privileged international British school, so I knew high academic standards. But what I saw at Thrive behind the curtains was new to me. Highly-trained professionals who constantly seek to develop their skills. A close-knit community that truly supports each other, a complete focus on the students' needs, both emotional and academic. And that's when I fell in love with Thrive as a professional. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Shamar Johnson, Senior. This is Junior. Junior had some developmental issues in public schools. I'm a teacher at Gompers. You saw some of my coworkers here earlier today. My son had issues at the public school system. They suspended my son in kindergarten. When I took him out of the public school system, I looked for a place for him. Thrive was that place. I'm sorry about what's happened with these other people, but that is definitely what I did not see with my son. Thrive is a place that my son loves, and I've seen him grow each year. And because I don't get those weekly or year semester quarterly grades, okay, cool. But what I'm looking at is what his Lexile score is, what his state testing is every year, and I've seen that go up. So I think that they need to be renewed. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi. My name is Wilhelmina Bradley, and this is my son, Tony. This is his first year at Thrive. Thrive is the perfect fit for my son, who is on the autism spectrum. Since attending Thrive, he has started to enjoy going to school every day. He has become involved in extracurricular activities and truly developed as a scholar. Thrive's project-based learning and each staff member's care for the whole child is something that has been transformational for my son. He finally has a sense of belonging. I ask each of you to take the final step to ensure students like my son can continue to thrive and develop as scholar by approving Thrive's charter renewal application. Thank you.
Hello, board. First, I want to say thank you for your service in San Diego. My name is Dr. Corey Pahanish. I'm the executive director of Bayside Community Center, an 87-year-old nonprofit organization serving the people of Linda Vista. We are operating out of one of San Diego's six most distressed communities that happens to be right in front of the Thrive Charter School, and we help to bring Thrive into our neighborhood and have zero regrets for it. In fact, the overwhelming majority of the feedback that we get from the constituents that we serve, thousands of people each year, has been nothing but positive and glowing. And I will say in closing, I'm really sorry for the parents that have been disappointed by the educational system, and I don't have kids.
Thank you. That concludes our 10 minutes. On the other side, I don't have any more speakers. That's it. Okay. Thank you.
We have one more that would like to speak?
Wait, under our 10 minutes. One minute, please.
Good evening. My name is Socorro Jaramillo. I am a retired teaching assistant from the school district. I worked 15 years in several schools. I am also a grandparent at Thrive. My granddaughter's previous school, she was law in math and said she did not like it. She refused to learn. Now that she is at Thrive, she says to me, "Grandma, math is fun. I like school now." And her previous school were unkind children to her, to my granddaughter. Her previous school counselor wouldn't help us. I had to get an advocate. My granddaughter cried and was scared before, but now she is happy. She's getting help, making friends, and learning because of Thrive and the personalized help that my granddaughter is receiving, the excitement to learn. She's all excited. She likes school now.
Thank you, and that does conclude it. I would like a motion first, and then we can move on to discussion. Motion one way or the other.
Well, I'll make a motion, and I know there needs to be a lot of discussion, but with reluctance, I move to approve the staff recommendation to deny this petition.
Second on it.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor moved by Mr. Barrera and seconded by Dr. Evans. Now let's have some discussion.
The first thing that I just want to say is thank you to everybody who's here tonight and to all of the speakers. I think the discussion has been frankly a needed model of civility in this current time, when I think people tend to stereotype each other and not respect each other, and I think everybody on both sides of this debate, and I think the district staff are, need to be respected and need to be thanked for their commitment to students. I'll start with a question for the superintendent, which is, what is the process, superintendent, that you would envision to work with families to find a place in other schools in this district or other charter schools in this district should the denial of Thrive go forward?
Thank you for bringing that forward, Mr. Barrera. So we will work with the charter staff as we have in other situations like this, that we have our choice brochure, our enrollment options, and we have many options across the district to have schools that will meet students' needs. Of course, we always say that we want students to look at their neighborhood school, see what programs and services and supports that we have available at their neighborhood school. We would welcome tours and bringing people there to the neighborhood school, and then if there's specialized programs that they're interested in, whether that's science or language programs, or physical activity, or arts programs, we have specialty schools, and we've built those based on feedback that we've heard from the community over years, and we want to be able to make those options available and help people walk through the process of the quality choices that are in every neighborhood across San Diego.
And would we proactively reach out to families?
We can do that, yes.
Well, I think that's important. There's nothing more difficult than having to make a decision like this, because I know how invested people are in their school community, and I respect that people have made a decision based often on exploring alternatives to send their, to send their students to Thrive to the school. I think we have a system that in many ways is broken. I think it's a system that pits districts against charter schools from the initial renewal process, sorry, approval process through the renewal process that restricts the kinds of choices that we have and that restrict our ability to find solutions that are better than simple black-and-white solutions. And I think that system needs to be changed, and I think people on either side of this debate, I would encourage to engage in a discussion about the changes that we need to make in a system that is now more than two decades old. I don't think anybody on this dais for one minute would claim that a school can be defined by its once-a-year standardized test scores. I think every member of this board, and I think Superintendent Martin has led consistently to define a school as more than just once-a-year standardized test scores. And I respect and I hear the voices from the Thrive community who talk about that you're receiving more than what is reflected in the once-a-year standardized test scores. However, as Dr. Evans and I think Dr. McCory discussed in the prior consideration of the empowered charter school, the bar to consider renewal for a school when we look at the standardized test scores is an extremely low bar. In fact, I believe in the last five or six years, this board has considered upwards of 46, 47 petitions for charter renewal. Many of those schools have shown growth in some areas, not great growth in other areas, have compared favorably in some instances to the comparison schools, have compared unfavorably in other instances. I think it's been a mixed picture, especially when we look at the, at the subgroups. But those schools, two schools to date, and I believe it's true about Thrive as well, don't present a mixed picture. I believe that the academic success or lack of success in this school points to a school that has simply not met the most minimal standards for academic achievement in the time that it has existed. And I believe that when the state sets out a process for districts to consider renewal, I think their expectation is that a district is going to be clear and consistent with the standards that it sets, and that is important not just for, you know, the district's work, but I think it's important for every charter school in this community, that you can expect that when the district considers a renewal, we're going to have clear and consistent standards, and when it comes to minimal success in looking at the CASP scores, that our bar is not going to be low, it's not going to be high, and that if a school shows even a mixed record of academic success, but shows some level of growth, which, you know, Ms. Walsh referred to, that we're very likely to renew that petition provided, you know, the financial management is sound and the operations are sound. And we've done that time and again. We've done that with two schools tonight that have come before us for renewal. But unfortunately, the lack of success in nearly every area with every subgroup and the decline as opposed to growth in nearly every area with every subgroup leads me to the conclusion that this school cannot be renewed.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Dr. McCory.
I also want to further clarify. The, the motion before the board is not to close a charter school. I think the, what we're considering here is whether this district wants to become the authorizing agent of the charter school. This charter school is authorized by the state of California. As one speaker mentioned earlier today, the charter initially was not approved by the district, was then not approved by the county, and then was approved by the state of California. And so it's the state of California which is the authorizing agent for this charter. So the board is not moving, I don't see the motion, of closing a charter school. The motion is to, is whether this board wants to consider becoming the authorizing agent. And so that's, so is that, is that, is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Then taking it a step further, as, as we go down the road of making a decision as to whether this board wants to become the authorizing agent of the charter, there are certain procedures and rules and processes that are put in place, and many of those are established by state statute. And my, and, and this, this district, as I understand it, has been fair in using the state statute every time a charter has come up for a renewal or a petition to begin, and with no exception. This district has been honest, fair, and open about its, about its action, and I expect that we will do this tonight in reviewing the charter here of Thrive. I've, I've received some, close 60 letters that have been received, that is delivered by USPS, that's Postal Service with a stamp. I've had more than 80 emails, roughly 20 organizations, groups, and civic business leaders who have communicated with me on many phone calls in support of, of the district becoming the authorizing agent of the charter. And almost all of these communications, Thrive is asked to be considered as being chartered by, by being authorized by, by the district. They would like to have become a member of the district's family of charter schools. And so it's what, this is what we're determining tonight in our, in, in our deliberations. And in these communications, like the comments made tonight, there are a number of parents and students and members of the community and professionals have spoken out in favor of charter, of the charter and, and the reasons why it should be reauthorized and authorized under our auspices, under our jurisdiction, under our, under the district. And I've also had communications on the other side with stating concerns and issues about either the program or incidences or things that have happened. But that's not our primary issue here tonight, I think. There are many things to be said for and against. There are issues related to positives and negatives. There are things that are working and things that aren't working. What we're coming down to tonight is, is what it is that is required for us to make a determination as to whether we become the authorizing agent. And I believe that that process is fairly clear, clearly stated in, in the law, and it has to do with, charter is being able to demonstrate growth, either that at or above their comparison group, and that is, and growth at or above in schools that they would have normally have attended. And that's what we're looking at, and it's in, in terms tonight, and I think that's what the district staff has attempted to do, was to determine whether, in fact, Thrive has produced results that would enable us to authorize the charter under the, under the that would enable us to authorize the charter under the law as we understand it. And it seems there's issues that have to do with how comparison groups are identified, which students are tested, and which scores are used. And I wonder if we could have, shed a little light on a couple of those. So first of all, maybe talk about the selecting of the schools that are of comparison.
Thank you. So similar to what we talked about in the Empower process, we do the same process for every charter school that comes up for renewal. So within the charts, page three, so table seven and nine, we, again, we look at the schools, the first comparison group is the schools that students would have otherwise been required to attend. So that's those first seven. And then the second set of seven are schools that the district identified as being demographically similar and, again, matching across those, trying to hit multiple points in those subgroups. So all of these schools have a minimum of two, some of them have three, some of them, a couple of them have four. So we try to match across. We don't focus on just one specific subgroup. We try to look across and match as many as we can. So that was the process for selecting those schools. And it's the same process that we do for the other charter schools.
Then in terms of schools that are, students would have normally have attended, their school attendance?
The first group, are you referring to the first group? The ones that students would have otherwise been required to attend? Yes, so same thing. This is based on the schools where Thrive pulls its enrollment from for the K-8 grades. So this is based on the schools that they pull from.
And what are some of the similarities and differences between those selected by the staff and those determined?
By the petitioners?
Appropriate by the petitioners, yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
So when we look at the group of comparison schools that were selected by the petitioners, we matched on what we consider the otherwise required to attend comparison schools, we matched six of the seven. So there was only one school that we had in the list that they pull students from that they didn't do a comparison to themselves of. So six of the seven matched in that section of schools. In the other ones, when we looked across the schools at the various subgroups within the schools that they selected as demographically similar, we noted that three of the six were only a match in one subgroup, different subgroups, but only in one, and that the others didn't match any of the subgroups. They were quite a distance off from Thrive's demographics. So that's why we've included their tables, but we have noted that we didn't identify any of those schools as demographically similar. It's also noted that a couple of the schools that were selected have historically high percentages of newcomer students. And so when we asked Thrive about that data point, because we weren't sure, since we don't authorize them, if they had a high percentage of newcomer population, they indicated to us that they did not.
Another issue was raised in terms of which students are actually included in the testing and the data.
Okay.
So they've mentioned K-1 and 2 not included and not 9 and 10.
Correct. So that would be the same for all of the comparison schools. So grades K through 2 are not tested in the state assessment, in the CASP assessment. Neither are grades 9 and 10. So all of these schools, that is a factor in them. All of these grades, like the elementary schools, approximately half of their grade levels are not tested. So that's not unique to Thrive in that a percentage of the students are not tested. That is happening across all of these schools because certain grade levels are not tested.
So the same rule is applied towards both?
Correct.
The, then with the comparisons that we have, what are the, and we have the general finding, is that they have not showed progress in either one of the comparison groups. How far off are they in showing progress?
Okay. So again, the two-step process, we look at the school compared to itself. When we look at school-wide compared to itself, we see school-wide ELA over, so there was a baseline, 2014, 15 was the first year of testing, we'd consider that baseline, and then three subsequent years. In ELA, they've dropped 38.8 percent, and in math, they've dropped 49.41 percent. So school-wide, them compared to them, we've seen declines. We've also seen similar declines in the subgroups. They had, I believe, two subgroups in math that made progress. So not a majority because they have six subgroups, and then one in ELA. So we have seen declines going across. When we compare them to the comparison schools, there are some that are close, but there are, I would say, a greater portion of the schools in both the required-to-attend schools and the demographically similar that are outperforming Thrive in both math and ELA.
And as trustee advisors concluded, this is not a close call.
I would say that that could be an accurate interpretation. So when we look at, you know, the statute where it says, do they perform at least equal to, we cannot make a finding that they perform at least equal to these schools. There's only one school out of 14 in ELA that Thrive outperforms and one school in math that they outperform. All of the others are performing above.
So one, what Thrive is saying is that they are making progress. And they base that progress on a use of a different set of tests and scores. Can you talk about the differences between the math and the CA, SPP, and the CASP?
Okay. So for us, the primary difference is that the CASP is publicly available data, so we can see this data for every school and every subgroup. So we can see across time if they are making increases or decreases in the academic performance. We cannot see that in the math data. There's no publicly available site that we can go to and verify the data or compare the data. When we look at math data, it is, the only thing we can do with it is essentially look at what the school has provided us. It's not a measure where we can go across to other schools and compare it. It's not a required assessment by the state. We consider it to be the internal assessment, the local indicator assessment, if you will. It's not, we're not able to verify it and compare it.
So in terms of the data we're using, it's been consistent over the years and applied equally with all charters that have come before us for approval?
That is correct. You can go back through our publicly available documents for our renewals and you can see where we have, since the CASP was initiated, where we have used that assessment both schoolwide and in subgroups. The new thing that was added for the renewals for this year is that we now have two reportings within the dashboard for schools. Before, we only had one, so there was no status change reports available. Those are available now for the majority of schools. So that is something new for this year. But historically, you can see where we have consistently applied the statewide assessments.
And then just one more question. It's been asked that we use measures other than test scores for making a decision on authorization. What's your response to that?
So I think we have considered some of those measures. We have definitely looked at the data that the schools submit that is outside of the state assessment system. We have also considered, as I mentioned, the dashboard. We have looked at those indicators within there and we can see changes within the school. If their suspension rates are increasing or decreasing, if their EL progress is going up or down, if there's not a second reporting of chronic absenteeism, that should be coming with the fall 2018 dashboard. So there are some other indicators in there that we can see. We can see their reclassification rates in there. So there are some other additional data points.
One area that Thrive has made, is a number of areas in their favor. One of them is the connection they have with their community in working with their local groups, the business groups, the business leaders, their organizations, their churches, and with their families. Is that part of the analysis?
So if we flip back to the statute, the statute is quite specific in that we have to make a finding or a determination on the academic renewal, if they have met academic renewal criteria, before receiving a renewal. That is the statute. Per Education Code 47607B, a charter school shall meet at least one of the following criteria before receiving a renewal. And that section is specific to the academic increases, the academic performance of the school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCrory, Dr. Evans.
Yes. First of all, thank you, Ms. Walsh, for all the very detailed work that you've been putting into this for a long time. I know the staff has been very diligent about this. A couple of questions first. You have the criteria by statute, but I believe you pointed out to me that you've also, I don't know if you've consulted or compared to what other districts are doing, what the state is doing. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, as part of our annual practice, we want to make sure that we are in line with what others are doing around the state when it comes to renewals. And so on an annual basis, we do go out and we search various renewals that other districts, county offices of ed, and the State Board of Education have processed. And so we look at those to make sure that, we're not operating in isolation and looking at things very differently than other authorizers have. When we look at, and we pulled six or seven different ones, we're all looking at very, very similar items. So I pulled one item, this renewal considered the CASP data and the dashboard. This one did CASP data, the comparison schools, and a review of the measurable outcomes that were listed in the charter's petition. This one did CASP graduation rates. Those would apply for a high school, of course, but this school doesn't have 11th, they just started serving 11th grade, so they don't have CASP scores for 11th grade or graduation rates. Another one looked at the CASP, and they do consider other items, but the primary source was the CASP. And this one also, same thing, it was the CASP and the dashboard. So we are, I believe, consistent with what other districts around the state are also doing.
So that, so what you're saying, that includes the State Board of Education?
Correct.
In terms of the criteria that they've used for renewals, right?
Correct.
Okay. And another question about, the state has been the authorizer and there was mention of some review or reports by the state on their operation each year. What did that show?
So the state, when it looks, when it does its annual process, the report that it issues looks at two areas. One is whether or not the school is in good financial standing, and the other is whether or not the school has made adequate progress in the academic indicator. So when we looked at the state reports, two had been issued for academics. It covered the 15, 16, and 16, 17 CASP results. And essentially, it does a comparison, it looks at the students in Level 1 or standard not met, and then it compares the number or percentage of students in that group. And you can be a certain percentage points away, it's 15 percentage points, different from the state. So for instance, if the state had 30 percent in ELA not meeting the standard, you could be within 15 percentage points of that and still be considered to have met, made adequate progress. So if the state was 30, you could be up to 45 percent in standard not met, and you would have been determined to have made adequate progress by the state. And then the other part that they looked at was the finances. And Thrive has had, the state just offers a good financial standing. So Thrive has been deemed to be in good financial standing.
So what they're doing on this annual review is not the same set of criteria as the petition or the charter renewal?
No. No, they're looking at the academic indicators and the annual progress on those, whereas in renewal, they are going to the 47607 statute that the rest of us are applying. So there are different measures that they're looking at.
Okay. So, I mean, during these past 10 years we were on the board, we've looked at this whole issue of charter petitions and charter renewals. Because when I first got on the board, there was the issue of someone just presented a good petition that we were sort of required by law to approve it, whether or not it was actually going to happen. And now we have the criteria here, at least, that they're, the two things are, one, that they are showing improvement according to the state-defined improvement standards, and the second is that they're doing at least as well as district schools. Those are the two that you've pointed out. And there's so many layers to this because we certainly think that a student is much more than a test score. When we're saying they're much more than a test score, it doesn't mean that we disregard test scores either, because that's one element that we're looking at. And another problem in that is that we're talking about, you know, average scores and number of students in each group, and it doesn't really tell us what is happening with each student, whether that's in our district schools or in the charter schools in terms of, you know, a particular school may not overall be performing very well, but it's doing great with a particular student and vice versa. A school could be, have an average performance of very high and not doing very well with another, with a particular student. So the other issue here we have is that there is a lot of support for this school, there's a lot of support in the community, there's a lot of passion of parents and others for this school. And I think that's good. I think if we also went to Fay and Mann and Oak Park and Crown Point and Language Academy and many others, that there would also be very enthusiastic parents supporting their schools. So everybody definitely can be proud of the school that they're going to and where they have their student and the school that they're working with. But this is sort of like being on a jury where we're supposed to follow the law in terms of, for example, when you talked about the criteria, these two criteria that we have for approving a charter school and Empower met only one of them, if I were making the law, I would say they would have to meet both of those, and even that would not be an extremely high bar. But that's not the point of what my personal opinion is. The point is, what does the law say? And we must make a decision. And I think one of the things is, you know, obviously, five years ago, we did not approve the petition. We had some concerns about how it was all put together. I think in the interest of transparency, any charter school that starts off should make it very clear to parents that it's a five-year term and that there's no guarantee that the charter is going to be there in the sixth year, because this is the whole process of giving people adequate time to figure out what their students are going to do if a charter isn't approved. And finally, I think what Mr. Brer brought up, which is really important, is that if a charter petition is denied, that we have a very big responsibility to those students at that school on a one-by-one individual basis to make sure they're getting the best possible service, to find whatever is best for their child. I mean, whatever is best, I mean, whether it's one of the neighborhood school, a district choice school, a charter school, even a private school, whatever it is that is best for that student is what the parents need to do. And I think we need to make a real commitment above and beyond what we do with all students because these are public school students who have been in another school. So also, as Mr. Brer said, this is not an easy situation, but we have to look at, you know, what is in the best interests of most of the students in terms of their academic performance. And that's, I believe we have to go by the criteria that have been set, well, we do have to go by the criteria that have been set by the state. And I think the staff has looked at this very diligently. I think they're very cooperative with charter schools in terms of getting all the information possible about what they're doing. But for that reason, I have to support the staff recommendation to deny the charter.
Thank you all. This is something I would like to address also. First of all, First of all, I did do a site visit, and I really enjoyed myself, and I liked having that visit to the charter in, at Carver School. And I also visited the regular program there at Carver. And part of my concern is that, I think that we, as board members, have to really look at the fact that, you know, in fact, I got a call last night from someone who had discussed the difference between formative data and standardized data, et cetera. And as a representative of an African, the African-American community, this kind of takes me back some to my experience at Duke, where the expectation is that when you say formative assessment, formative data, that should give students an opportunity to learn the concepts so that they then can perform on whatever instrument that we're talking about. That's why we talk about students and their various learning styles, some are visual learners, some are auditory, some are kinesthetic, et cetera. Because whatever that particular child's way of learning is, you, you help them to learn so that they can then perform on whatever measures that you're talking about. And so, I, I have some concerns that the data do not reflect that the formative is helping students to get to that standard level, if you will, because it's kind of defeating the purpose. Formative means that as you're going along, you catch whatever issues the child has, and you address them, and then you move them to the next stage. So formative could be a number of different things, and I won't give a lecture on that tonight. But I think that is a concern of mine when I look at the data and the comparisons. I, I think we have to keep in mind that we have uniformity, that we should be able to compare across groups, whether or not it's, we should not use one group's formative data and try to compare that. That's why we have the various tests that we do, and we use a uniform platform. So that's troublesome to me. I think that you go down the pathway of looking at anecdotal data, which means that you look at an anomaly or those on the outside, rather than looking at the total picture. So that's, that's important when we, when we're talking about a school in children's There's also the issue of local versus state. This charter has an option that most of them, most of the charters who've come before us have not had. They've actually had the experience of coming to the local and to the county, and then going to the state, and actually receiving the charter through the state. So they understand that process and know what to do to get to that level. And here now comes my bias. When I went out, my, my preference for our children in the San Diego Unified School District is to have our students all under the local auspices, because I don't think you get the same level of service from the state that you do from a local. And maybe that's a bias, but I really feel that the children could be better served under the local jurisdiction with the guidance from our staff. However, I don't think in all good faith, I could say tonight that, given the standards and given the data that were presented, that I, I just could not do that in all good consciousness. What I would love to see is for this charter to be, to go to the state, continue to demonstrate, to demonstrate to the district in a timely, in a fashion that's not five years, saying if they were approved by the state, and in a year or two, they showed the kind of progress, then to come back to the district and say, "We've met the standards as they've been spelled out, and now would you charter us?" Because I personally, I stated this when we discussed this before, I, I don't like the fact that we have some of our children at Carver, and we have children from the state's charter, and then the two are not under the same jurisdiction, and yet they're all on the same grounds together. It just makes more sense to me to have them all, at least with some oversight from San Diego City Schools. And, and that was why I made that visit, to see whether or not things are working okay that way. But it's just very troubling to see the data. And we can't have them to isolate their data and say, "For students who have been here, they're outperforming students elsewhere," but we don't have those comparison data. We, we can't compare because we, we have not isolated the data for the other schools to say which way it goes. So that, we'll come back to that, comparing apples to tangerines or whatever. We, we need that uniformity in order to be able to say, yes, this place, this school is better than that school for these children, et cetera. So, having said all of that, you're all wondering what I'm saying, I would like for them to go to the state and get renewed, and then to come back within a year or two and say, "We've now met your standards that are specified, and then we'll consider them again for renewal." Does that make sense?
I just want to cover one more item that came up in the conversations and the, and the emails and the discussions. It's the issue that has to do with performance versus progress. And so, one strongly, a strong point made by Thrive was that their students make progress over time, and there should be some consideration within the authorization to take that into, into, into account. But, you have a comment about that?
So, that's what we commonly refer to as looking at the cohort data, the longer students are in a certain place, ideally, the better they perform academically. But as it was just mentioned, we don't have that data. It's not available on a state website. So while, while Thrive can give us their cohort data for the CASP, you know, for two-year cohorts, three-year cohorts, we can't, we don't have that data for the other schools. And it often tends to not include the whole student body. And so, I think part of the process is looking at, you know, how the school is performing school-wide and by numerically significant subgroups, and if certain portions are being not included in those data points, I think it makes it difficult for us to truly assess, as you've mentioned, apples to apples.
So it's, it's, the issue speaks to the dilemma we find ourselves in terms of making a decision, using state statutes that may or may not capture the entire picture. However, that's the situation we find ourselves in, and that, in order for, if, once we make an exception, then we have not been fair to, to the other charters that have come before us in the past or may come before us in the future. And we want to make sure that we have a standard process and procedure and an agreement. It seems like the, the CASP and that procedure has been well-established, the way in which schools have been selected have been well-established, the comparison groups have been well-established. And it appears that where it may not capture the true value of what is happening and taking place at this school, and as we've already said, this school is more than a score, it is, it is the standard that we are stuck with, and I think it's the one in which we're required, as Dr. Evans has mentioned, as a jury, so to speak, to rule in accordance with the law. And, and, and as, as a result, I am, would be obligated to, to, to vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Please vote. And the motion...
To deny.
...to deny passes for zero. Thank you. We are now on item J. I'm, I'm sorry. I might do it so wrong. I guess. I won. I, I won.
Thank you, Deidra. Ms. Walsh, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Let's see, we will now hear item one point, I-1. The memorandum of understanding by and among the state allocation board, the California School Finance Authority, Office of Public School Construction, San Diego Unified School District, and each charter school receiving Proposition 51 funds from the state as follows. San Diego Cooperative, San Diego Global Vision Academy. Would you please exit expeditiously so we can move on? The schools are as follows: San Diego Cooperative, San Diego Global Vision Academy, America's Finest, the O'Farrell Community School, Albert Einstein Academy, and Gompers Preparatory Academy. I would like a motion on item one, I think, one I-1. I think, Mr. Barrera, you moved it, and the second was, Dr. McQuarrie. Okay. No staff presentation?
No.
Okay. Staff available for questions? Any speakers? No. I have none. Okay. Please vote on that. Okay, and that passes for zero. And now, we're on to I-2. Local indicators for the California School Dashboard Fall 2018. No staff presentation? Do we have any speakers? None on I-2? So please...
Information.
This is just information. Let's see. No speakers, so we just move on. And that takes us to item J-1.
I do have a question. Do we do the healthy kids every year with every student? I mean, every, every grade level?
No, it's not every grade level. Last year, we added fifth grade, and it's fifth grade, seventh, ninth, and 11th grade. And we used to not have fifth grade, but we've added fifth grade to it now.
So what, what do we do now?
Fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th grade.
Fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th, and nothing before that?
Right.
Okay.
And fifth was not something that we had done previously. I-2 is an annual item that we just do to, in a public meeting, indicate what the local indicators will be. So we just listed them as a matter of annual business for our LCAP process.
For J, we have a speaker on three items. Do you want to just cover them 1, 15, and 18?
Regarding field trips, there's still an issue with children being excluded from field trips because adults are calling them optional. And as we know, field trips are a, an educational activity, it's actually a curricular activity. And kids are being asked to pay fees for that, and they shouldn't. I see that on this field trip form, it says, "No student athlete will be excluded from the trip due to inability to pay." And it says that on, on the girls' water polo as well. However, that's not being communicated to parents. Just because you write it on the form so that you can show there's a document saying, "Well, we don't exclude any children," doesn't mean that's translating down to the school level. This Point Loma High School team, this shouldn't be approved at all. These, these kids are having to pay like $3,000 to go on one trip, and the kids don't know this when they, they sign up. There are a lot of issues with the Point Loma sailing team, including requiring the students that want to be on the sailing team pay a fee to the yacht club, because they're having the meetings at the yacht club, and the yacht club can actually control who goes to the meetings and which parents cannot go to the meetings. There are a lot of issues with this that, that are going on. And regarding J-15, Sofia Ferrer needs to scrutinize expenditures for the graduation and promotion ceremonies. Some of these expenditures are exorbitant. There is no reason why, with all the money we spent from our bonds for these new football fields, that the kids can't just have their graduation on the football fields like we've done for decades, and it works. But spending, the kind of money you've been spending for a special graduation site, i- is not necessary. There are a lot of needs that are needed at the school that are not being fulfilled because of the budget cuts that need to be considered before you're spending something on a luxury of having a promotion or graduation ceremony at USD. Schools are perfectly fine, that's where they should be held. J-18, Mission Bay, they want to add an IB science pilot program. They have enough IB tests already, they have enough IB test classes. And when I bring up to the principal year after year that he needs to start telling these kids that it's not mandatory to take the tests, he won't do it. I get a phone call, and I get a three-minute message, blah, 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 blah. But I want to see the documents that state you're telling the parents that it's optional, and I still don't have them. Now, why wouldn't I get them? Because when I look on the website, it says, "You will take these tests." That's what it says. "You will be taking these IB tests." And they're expensive. I think the application fee alone is like 125 bucks, and then it's another $100 for every test that you take. So for parents, they really need to know that they have the option of not having those, those children take the tests. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote.
So I'll move those three items.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Barrera and seconded by Dr. Evans. All in favors, I vote, please. That passes for zero. And that takes us to the item...
Public testimony.
Okay, public testimony. Non-agenda items, and I think we have one speaker, Ms. Francie Maxwell.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the board, given the state of our country right now, why would you allow the Black Minds Matter event to be held on a board night from 4:30 to 5:30 in a working community? It is disingenuous when we say we want to train and get to, and cross and do things when you know that it's a board meeting, and some of the board members needed to be at Morris from 4:30 to 5:30. You look at the implicit bias issue that we just had at La Jolla, and Omar, he did do a wonderful job, so did Acacia. They did a wonderful job opening up communication and dialogue, but I'm concerned with the fact that we have the National Equity Project, and you're giving them half a million dollars. Shouldn't they have went to the La Jolla issue and handled it? Where's the statistics to show that their work is actually effective? $500,000? Where's the board report so that we can review, as the public, the data that shows how actually effective they are? I think that we keep giving the National Equity Project a ton of money, and nobody is showing us what's our results. A half a million dollars for two years? After you've abolished race in human relations, overly qualified people that you have yet to reinstate, we won't even go into what you have done to Leonard Thompson, a black man, that his department... man, that his department, that he worked in for years, was abolished. Other departments were folded in, they were closed on the report, but that department was in red with the word "abolished." And so if we still had race in human relation, there could have been some interventions for the La Jolla elementary issue that occurred, that we had people go out and handle, and it wasn't the National Equity Project. So what are they doing with all the money with the district? Once again, we keep having some programming that's not being marketed, because a lot of people got a last-minute phone call about the Black Mind Matters event. There were no ads taken out in La Presa, there were no ads taken out in the Filipino press. These are community newspapers that those students and families in District E, they read. You already know my favorite newspaper, The Voice and Viewpoint, so we didn't take out an ad this time for the Black Minds Matter, but that's okay. But I'm saying that we should be able to rotate when something like this is being brought to the community with the Filipino press, or La Presa, or even the Monitor in Lemon Grove, whatever newspaper in the community that you want to pick. When we have opportunities like this to engage and empower the community, we need to market that. So maybe you guys need to have an extra conversation with Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you. The next regular meetings will be held on Tuesday, December 4, 2018, and Tuesday, December 11, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. This ends the board meeting for tonight.
Thank you.